It is Monday, August 21st. Would you all please stand and pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We welcome you tonight. There are two sign-in sheets. You have two opportunities to address the school board. One will be at item Roman numeral six on your agenda. So it would be to address any of the future agenda topics. And the other opportunity to address the board is at the very end of the board meeting under item eight, Roman numeral eight. So if you would like to address us, there's a sign-in sheet in the back. Right? Okay. Thank you. And we are ready to move forward. So the first item is on our agenda. Dr. Baracco.
You do have one revision to the agenda, and that is under Roman numeral seven. D professional leave request, Mrs. Castaneda, and Matt is at your workstation.
All right, we need a motion for that.
Move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Correspondence, Mrs. LaZanty?
There is no correspondence at this time.
All right, thank you. Liaison committee updates. And Mr. Beck, so let's start with you tonight.
The only meeting that took place between our last board meeting and today was the Dairy Parks Department meeting. Nothing really pertinent covered regarding the Lake Central School Corporation, but they are working on some playground equipment and some installation of that at Hearthstone, Everly, Sheffield Estates, Veterans, and Elmer Miller Park. But they're getting some rebid quotes on that playground equipment for kids and children and students at those parks.
Okay.
That's basically all that transpired during the meeting.
All right. And do you have anything about the dire redevelopment?
Nothing to report on that.
And Mrs. Seuss, anything for St. John redevelopment?
No, nothing to report.
And dollars for scholars?
No. It's quiet. Get ready for homecoming.
All right. And when is homecoming?
September 23rd?
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third, twenty-fourth.
Okay, September 23rd, 24th. Twenty-third?
Twenty-third. Twenty-second is the dance, right?
Twenty-second.
Twenty-second is the football game.
Okay, very good. All right. And Mrs. LaZanty, and anything with Sherville redevelopment?
Nothing for our school district at the last meeting.
Okay. And Mr. Marshall, anything from Westlake or the personnel?
Our next joint managing board will be held in September here at Lake Central on the 24th. And nothing to report on personal interview committee.
Okay. And I have on the legislative committee, I'm so happy that we expanded the definition of development to the lake, and I'll be talking about that. I see that's on the agenda. And you know that happened because people rallied and talked to the legislators throughout the state. And we had a real core leadership group members from this area. And so it finally got through to them, and I thought that was just so awesome because for how many years have they asked for this? So finally. So see, they do listen to us. So looking forward to hearing more about that tonight. And we will be planning to meet with our local legislators again in the very near future. Lake Central Education Foundation, it was really a cool day today because the high school had a project that was funded through the Lake Central Education Foundation to view the solar eclipse. And it was totally awesome. See, we can see the total.
We got pretty good coverage. You know, there was definitely a change in temperature, and it got a little bit darker.
It did.
Mr. Bishon had his telescope set up with filters. We got some really cool pictures and, you know, for Tyler as a student, I think the students had a pretty good time.
Well, I came over today because I was invited because it was part of the Lake Central Education Foundation. It was so well organized. They had different staging areas for the classes to go in. All the kids were really intent. Some were a little bit like, wow, it feels cooler. Yeah, well, think about it, you know? So part of that thinking process. So it was a great, great experience.
We're very thankful for the education foundation and Mr. Bishon for coming up to the front. And we really appreciate your support.
Will he be showing us some of those pictures, do you think?
You know, we got a picture. I think we need to put them all together. I know that LCTV and the news are putting, you know, a product together.
It was very well organized, so thank you for providing that. That's a huge task for a school this size. And with the wellness committee, I think our next move is down to Indianapolis in October where we're talking about there's more to compensation than just a paycheck. Right, Dr. Baracco? All right. And he'll tell you more about that later. All right, thank you. And moving on to the official school business topics.
So we're seeking board approval from the minutes from our last meeting. And then we also acknowledge that we did meet in our workshop. There were no minutes from that. And then finally, approval of claims payroll and extracurricular expenditures that you received in your packets.
To approve?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any questions? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. And motion carries. And any public comments, Mrs. Nowak? Okay. And official school board business topics, regular agenda. Dr. Baracco.
Okay, so at our last meeting during the public or during the board comment section, Dr. Malco mentioned some award winners. And we had already invited our transportation director down. I see that he hustled over here from potentially a game for his son or daughter. And so we'd like to recognize him for and give him a certificate for his outstanding achievement.
All right, very good.
He sent over the front.
Mr. Flores, come on up.
And please excuse my outfit. I want to use all purpose.
Oh, boy. Busy, busy person.
Yes.
Okay. Dr. Baracco, I think, has the certificate. And we received a letter that you are now IASBO approved.
Correct.
So do you want to tell us a little bit about that?
Sure. Actually, I went through the ISBO certification, which is the chief financial course that I went through. It was, geez, I've been going through it for probably three and a half years. And I finally finished up at the annual conference. There was one course that I was needing to finish that, so I finished that up. And in addition to the chief financial track that I went on, I also finished the human resource track as well, so.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations. So we're really proud of your commitment to furthering your education to be the very best you can be. That's a great role model for our students and our teachers and our school members, so we appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Please excuse my outfit.
Thank you for stopping by. Have a good game.
Thank you.
I don't know if you guys are sitting back there. Put this hat on. All right, thank you for that.
Okay, I just wanted to make an announcement to the board that we did have 19 different administrators serve at the Sherville Dire and last Friday, the St. John Corn Roast. I want to publicly thank all those folks for giving up a Friday evening, in some cases, more than one Friday evening. And the members of the chambers certainly appreciate seeing our people out there. And I certainly appreciate seeing our people out there for the St. John Corn Roast. As many people know, the Rotary partners with the St. John Chamber and the Rotary's portion of the proceeds of the profits go to Lake Central scholarships. So that's very nice, and we hear about those. And usually, I get to award some of those at the tea in the spring. So it's a great cause. And again, thank you to our administrators for coming out and helping. It's nice for us. I mean, our people put in a lot of time at school events as it is, so I really don't like to ask them to do a bunch of stuff, but it is summer and haven't done any for a while, so we push them out a little bit. But I get a lot of compliments from the people in the different chambers appreciating that we're there. So I just wanted to make sure the board knew that.
When I think on behalf of the board, please extend our thank you to them because we do appreciate that leadership in our communities.
I will. And, you know, some of them do the dirtiest jobs, too, dipping that corn in the butter.
Or shucking it.
Shucking corn, so. My next item is just to do a quick recap of the community forum. We did receive 39 surveys completed at the end of the forum. You know, the reason we wanted to collect data on those topics at that event was because we wanted to be able to give people, before they answer questions about what they think we should or shouldn't be doing, to have some baseline information. And so sometimes we survey people, and we think they can have an opinion about something such as school culture or climate, and they may not need to have background information. We wanted them to have background information. My concern is with such a small sampling, you know, what can you learn from the information? And so I want us to consider possibly serving our community again through some other means and without, you know, forcing people to see the presentation. I'm not exactly sure how we can accomplish that other than to change the types of questions we ask. But I do think it's something I'll be coming back to the board with because we're going to have to reach out to a larger audience to see what they think because some of that information will help us as we plan for the future. So sometime, hopefully, the end of September, early October, I have my next move on collecting that information from the community.
Any questions? Suggestions or ideas?
I will add that I liked the way the meeting felt. And I did have some people appreciate that we took some questions and answered them on the spot. And so I think there's a place for that type of gathering in the future, perhaps not asking for a two-year commit- a two-hour commitment. Instead, you know, maybe just asking for a one-hour commitment with a 40-minute presentation and then 20 minutes of questions and then get home. If we have a specific topic that we know we want to talk about, I think that there's a place for that type of format. So I did think that some of that feedback I got from people helps plan for the future. But disappointed that we didn't have a better turnout, and probably August isn't good.
Right.
But I didn't really want to wait till the end of September when all the open houses were open or completed, but probably should have.
With the open houses coming up, could we maybe put out some information and ask for when good time- like when parents would prefer or how they would prefer to get that information since we need to get it out? Like, would they prefer a webinar, a- just a video they watch and then do a survey or things like that? Or no, not so much?
I'm not sure that talking people into watching 75 minutes of our presentations.
Well, no, I'm saying asking them how they would like to get this information. Do they want it through a webinar? Do they want it through the presentation? Do they want it via, you know, to read it? I don't know how. I guess just asking them how do they want us to get to them is what I'm saying. I apologize, I'm not saying.
No, I think we understand. Or the flip side could be, could you set your dates and then have each of them share the dates?
Something at the open house is right. This is our upcoming date for our next forum.
I thought it was really informative.
I do, too.
I think when people realize how low we are in the tax rate, that's pretty powerful information to get to our constituents. The other recommendation I would have is, as you were putting together the PowerPoint, is to maybe have more detail as to the amount of cuts that you had to make. So I think you only had on there about the music teacher and the custodians, maybe. And you had a lot more cuts than that.
Yeah, if we were going to be doing a subsequent presentation on, you know, what we did have to cut to make our budget work back in '12 or what we would like to see expanded if we had a greater level of resources, that probably would be part of that conversation because some of what we removed, we wouldn't bring back. But there are some things we've never had that we would really like to be able to do for our students. So that could be part of the fall future conversation, for sure.
Right. Because I know it's pretty challenging. I know there were huge cuts to programs, and I didn't get that sense from the presentation that night. But again, I know we were trying to be succinct and move forward, so perhaps having more detail on that would be good. Anybody else with some ideas on how to reach out? No?
Okay, I'll bring you back up in about a month.
Yes, maybe it was just a bad time. I don't know. Maybe people were getting ready for school. But good questions, Ellen, and good information, Miss Sher.
So my final item is just, I've received a commitment already from Don and Cindy and Janice regarding the email that came out from ISBA for our annual joint meeting with the superintendent's group out of Indianapolis. And that is October 2nd and 3rd are the main days of the program. Generally speaking, we go down on Sunday evening as well. So I would want to hear from, hopefully, Howard and Sandy in the next week or so so we can get that taken care of registering.
And I'll get the registration taken care of.
No, I'll register all of you. Yeah. I'll register everyone.
I'll let you know very shortly.
Thank you, Howard.
All right. Any other questions for Dr. Baracco? Okay, moving on to Mr. Gandotti.
Thank you. My first item is just to seek your approval for the personal recommendations that were in your packet this evening.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any questions about the personal recommendations? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. And motion carries.
Thank you. My second item is just a little bit of information on our upcoming playgrounds to pills presentation that will happen in the district, specific to middle school on September 18th and 19th. I did provide you some flyers. I do have additional flyers if you would like more of those. But just to quickly recap, on Monday, September 18th, we will do a student five through eight presentation at Clark that will begin at 1:30. And then on Tuesday, September 19th, the first presentation will be at Kaler. That will be at 9:00 a.m., four students, five through eight. And then the second and final middle school presentation will take place at Grimmer at 1:30, also for the Antider School. That evening, we will do a resource fair at 6:00 for all of our parents and community members. And then the actual presentation will be from 6:30 to 8:30. So that will take care of the first round of the third phase in our drug education program. More information in another few weeks, but just if you're looking at your calendar, the second Stairway to Heroin presentation will occur on October 10th here at the high school. And we will have two presentations during the day, specific to high school students. And then the evening presentation with the resource fair on October 10th. More information will be coming on that.
Al, is that the Stairway to Heroin? Is that the same family, same group?
That will be the same group.
Presenting it, that's not good.
Yes.
And what do they do different? Do they do the Playground to Pills?
They do the Playground to Pills. They actually do all three of the presentations. They have the Wake Up Call, they have, which is a parent-only presentation. They have the Stairway to Heroin, which is high school. And then they have Playgrounds to Pills, which is middle school.
I have to tell you, I was on the grant reading committee for the Lake County Substance Abuse Council. And I bet there were at least three, maybe four additional schools coming on board with this. They were asking for grant funding through the Lake County Substance Abuse Council. So you planted the seed, and now it's starting to grow and develop. And so that's pretty awesome.
Yeah, they're getting a good number of phone calls from Lake and Porter County, and they're trying to do their- the best that they can to meet, you know, Indiana's need. They're also pretty busy in, of course, Wisconsin. And they have done a few events in Iowa. So they're branching out.
Yeah. It's pretty nice to see that grow and the awareness by people in the community that we need to communicate with our students.
Yeah, I think the awareness, you know, the resources are extremely important. People really just don't know where to go when they're in crisis. So I think that those are very helpful to community members.
Oh, yeah. And I have to say that our two resource officers that we have are very good about assisting also in helping to answer questions that we might have. So we've got a couple of really great guys there.
One item that I did not have on my agenda is I just wanted to talk a little bit about enrollment where we're at. I did present you at your station with, as of this morning, what our current elementary numbers were in class sizes at each building. So feel free to review that on your own. And if you have any questions, do either call or email me. You know, our overall enrollment as a district is a moving target right now. We're only in the second week of school. So we still have a few folks that are on the books that haven't shown up yet that we're trying to track down, as well as a few that will still be enrolling. But right now, our number looks to be around 9,380. But don't hold me to that number because it changes hourly. But I think we're in a good place. We're in a little bit better place than we thought we would be at this point in time. So of course, Rob and I are always happy about that. And we will continue to monitor those numbers, you know, all the way up and through, of course, you know, our average daily membership count. So I'm watching those every day as we speak.
Perfect. Question for you on Homan. It says that there's five sections of kindergarten with an average of 14.6?
No, that- see that little box that didn't show up right there? So the average is not in that box. That 14.6 is a different number.
Okay, so cross that out.
Right.
Okay, I was going to say, what is it?
See, the averages are in the blue, 22, 18, some of them. It's just an Excel spreadsheet that didn't come through. So when you look at, so you just have to see how that works.
So that one, did you say?
So that looks like 21.5.
22. 21.5?
Right.
Perfect. Thanks for providing this. Do we have any questions for Mr. Gandotti?
Let me just, one more item. These numbers are based on elementary homerooms, okay? So we do have, you know, some specific population that spends time in a homeroom but then doesn't stay in that classroom all day long and is receiving services in other rooms throughout the building. So keep in mind, you may look and you may see that one teacher has three or four extra students. That's probably because we cluster those students in one homeroom, and then they leave after that homeroom period's over. Draws that number down. So we're pretty balanced. I think we're happy with where the numbers are right now. Of course, in a district like ours with growing subdivisions out there, you know, this- somebody moves in tomorrow, and there's another first grader or kindergartner, not necessarily in the same building. So, you know, we're always monitoring what's happening.
So with this- with VIVAGE, with the kindergarten, and the one class has 12 because it's half-day, right?
That is half-day. That's our only half-day kindergarten program in the district.
Right. So when you say the average down there, does that include that class of 12 in the average?
So if you were to look at, there's two 17s and 18s and a 19. So you would look at that. Is that- that class size is actually close to 17 and a half, 18.
Okay.
So you have to take that only out of the mix.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking, too, to look at fairly. Okay.
Because you can't really count that.
All right. And high school numbers are good?
High school numbers are good. You know, Mr. Begley is happy, I think, where we're at right now. You know, the difficulty in the high school is you have individuals who, you know, don't show up, and you're not really sure where they're at. You know, so you either make them inactive and open up those sections or you, you know, you wait until you receive a transfer request. So, you know, of course, Mr. Begley needs the numbers open in his sections, so we try to make those students inactive. But we still do have a little over 20 that are out there that we're unsure if they're returning or not.
So what is the enrollment number at the high school then right now?
Through 30, 335. That's gone down.
Yeah, it's down a little bit, but you're still.
3335?
Yeah.
That's healthy, though.
Well, there are the ones that have showed that we are calling, trying to get and figure out if they're coming or not. Making them active so we have seats open for people who do show up.
What you also have at the high school is based on the state's date of September. You know, you have individuals that are still attempting to graduate with last year's graduation date, who are attempting to finish a few classes. So we have, I think I looked today, we might have 17, 18 of those.
We want to catch them to graduate before the September date so they count on our graduation rate.
Oh.
So they're in a separate box in the computer. You know, I mean, it's hard for me to count those for 2017, 18, although some of those may not make it by that date in September, which then they would come for 2017, but 18. But right now, the goal is to try to get them on last year's graduation date.
Okay, cool.
That's why that number floats for a while.
Oh, yeah. Very good, very good. Any other questions from anyone? Okay, thank you. And moving on to Director of Primary Ed.
Thank you. My first item is to seek your approval of professional leave requests that were included in your packet.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. And motion carries.
Thank you. And my second item, I included our spring and summer IRE3 results in your packet. As you can see, we are very consistent, year to year. And we have a strong percentage passing in the spring. And then after summer school, and those students take the IRE3 again that did not pass, we- our percentage always goes up. And we have a pretty strong showing with 96, 97 percent pretty much across the board.
Any questions?
Do we know why hyper is a little bit lower than any others?
This year, as happened some years, they do have included as their third grade last year were a number of students that would be eligible for a waiver, meaning they have an IEP or an ILP. And there just happened to be a larger number. So all of those students that did not pass were eligible for a waiver in that group. So I don't think there's any issue. I think it just happens to be one of those years.
Perfect. Thank you. How effective is this assessment, this test?
I say it all the time, we really do not get any information that we don't have already. So it's not really that effective.
Something to remember when we talk with our legislators, maybe, you know?
And in my opinion, it causes more anxiety among kids than ISEPS because, well, because they- the law has changed slightly. But it used to be if you did not pass it, you were in third grade again. So they softened it a little. You do have to receive third grade reading instruction, but that's still out there. But if you don't pass IRE3, you're not going out to the next grade. That gets kids' attention, even third graders.
And I can remember when I met with you and Ms. Sarah, at one point, you were telling me all the assessments that are used. And Amplify seemed to be, are we still using Amplify?
No.
We're not using Amplify?
We do TRC, which is like a DRA, or it's the same thing. We get the same information.
Okay. All righty, any questions? All right, thank you. And I'm sorry, I don't have my agenda in front of me. Moving on to Mrs. Castaneda.
Thank you. For my first item, I am seeking your approval
For my first item, I am seeking your approval for the revised professional leave request that you received this evening.
Move to approve.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Which, which one is, are we adding on?
Mrs. Gardner's, at the very end.
Okay. Her to structure grade ten now.
Chris State offered up some less training to prep for the grade ten exam, so that's why she's attending that, and it was a late entry.
All right, are there any questions? We have a motion on the, on the floor. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, and motion carries.
Thank you. I'm not quite sure how to handle this, but I should have had a field trip request on there as well, and it wasn't under advisement, so can I ask your approval for the field trip that I believe you had in your original packet?
True.
Oh, Jeremy Rainwater to take the varsity boys soccer team?
Yes.
Yeah.
Move to approve that proposal.
Second. We have a motion and we have a second. And this is to give Mr. Rainwater permission to take the varsity boys soccer team to the Evansville Memorial Tournament in Evansville on September two and three. Athletics will cover all fees.
Correct.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, and it sounds like motion carries.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And for my last item, there was a letter that was included in your packet, and we are very excited that Lake Central School Corporation was actually approved recently as a Common Sense Certified District for Digital Citizenship. This honor recognizes our efforts in teaching digital citizenship to our young people, as well as engaging the community in this important discussion. And so this evening, we have two people who were very critical in that process with us. We have Jolene Mokaki, who is our middle school technology trainer, who did a great deal of the actual submission of this opportunity to get this recognition. And then we also have Christina Perez, who is one of our lead computer teachers at the elementary level. So I'd like to call up and ask some stuff.
So I'm Jolene Mokaki, and I'm one of the four educational technology trainers here for Lake Central. And our job as technology trainers is to help teachers harness the power of technology for learning. And so with that, obviously, is teaching kids about the safety of all the things that we're using, you know, getting kids involved with things on social media to collaborate and connect and things like that, but also having a common language for safety. And so that's where our computer teachers come in. And I was really lucky to be on the committees last year that were looking at the technology curriculum from K through eighth grade. And what I was observing was Christina, who is the, you know, lead on the curriculum committee for K-4, has done tons already with teaching K-4 about digital citizenship. In kindergarten, they're learning already that early about searching safely online, and then it goes up through, you know, cyberbullying through the grades and things like that. And so when I started working with the middle school teacher, and we were looking at some of the things that they're already doing as well, and realizing that when we've done community presentations on social media and parent presentations, we always refer to common sense media. And so they offer a certification, and so I thought it would be really great to recognize the work that the computer teachers are already doing, and how that's helping us help all the teachers incorporate this into their classrooms. And so at the end of the school year, we went through the application process and were approved right at the end of the summer, so we're super excited about that. We are going to be looking forward with kind of a plan that Common Sense helps you put into place once they've certified you. Every one of the computer teachers is now certified in digital citizenship instruction, and then our corporation got the recognition as well. So looking forward, we're going to be doing a lot with helping the teachers utilize, all across every curriculum, we're going to be utilizing digital citizenship lessons, and then working with parents a little bit more. And then about mid-year, we're going to go through a reflection of what we've done over the last year and a half or so, and apply again, because I feel like we're doing so much and making great strides, and I think that's really important in a time like now when we hear a lot of negativity in the media. So we're pretty excited that we've got that, so.
Congratulations.
Excellent.
Thank you. Well, we thank you very, very much for taking the time, energy, effort to put that all together, and to model that for our students. Is this something parents will know about? Will this go out in student newsletters, or will it be posted on the website, or? I think this is something to celebrate, Phil. Would you like a copy?
They did give us this as a template also to submit to the press as a distinction, and it's definitely something we do want to get on the school website. Actually, Mrs. Mokaki and Ms. Perez have talked about creating a digital citizenship webpage that would be accessible from all the school webpages, that would talk about all the wonderful things that are taking place, as well as the opportunities we have for our parents and our teachers to incorporate this into their day-to-day.
Well, is it feasible that you would take a picture of these two young ladies with this after the board meeting, and that would go in the webpage?
Sure.
Yeah. So will you, will you stay for a minute? I'll take a picture with this cellphone, but it works. Thank you so much, we appreciate that. Quite a celebration. All right, and moving on to Director of Special Ed.
My first item tonight is to seek your approval for the professional leave requests included in your packet.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and we have a second. Are there any questions? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, and motion carries.
Thank you. And for my next item, I wanted to talk a little bit about what Dr. Malcom mentioned already this evening. We sometimes in this meeting have some negative things to say about our state legislature, so I wanted to share something positive that they did for us in the field of education. Developmental delay is a special education eligibility that in the state of Indiana could only be used for ages three through five. And so we were using that, we use that for our preschool age students, and then have to relook at eligibility before they go to kindergarten. And neighboring states like Illinois and Michigan have already extended that age for developmental delay up to age nine, which honors the fact that there are students who come to us in school just behind, based on their early experiences, and with some support can grow out of that essentially, and develop skills that, that make them ready to learn in the classroom. So this is something that ICASE, which is the State Indiana Council of Administrators of Special Education, has advocated for, for quite some time, and has done, our professional organization has done a lot of lobbying around. And so we were very pleased to have this passed this summer. So as of July first, two thousand eighteen, that eligibility is extending to the age of basically less than nine, so up through eight years, eleven months. So what I included in your packet was the, the initial guidance document that we received from the Department of Ed that just explains how this timeline will work for us. So as of right now, we're still under the old rule, up through age five, and then beginning July first of next summer, we will be able to extend that. So I'll be working with the staff, I've already shared this information with all of our preschool staff, all of our school psychologists, and then we'll be working this school year to kind of look at how we're going to define that eligibility for our school age students. Right now, the assessments and things that we use are really geared toward early childhood students. So we need to look at how we will establish developmental delay for children, kindergarten through essentially probably second grade. But it really will allow us to support students. A lot of times what we see is that we're dismissing children from that eligibility at age five, and they go to kindergarten in first grade and really struggle, and then by second and third, we're seeing them with a huge gap in their skills, and then it's, it almost has promoted, promoted that wait-to-fail model that we're supposed to be getting away from in special education. So, so it'll take some work from us this year, but we're excited that we'll have this possibility to support some students that we've really felt like our hands were tied with those. So, any questions?
No, I, I bet your school psychs are really excited, because that was always a level of frustration.
The school psychs and, and our early childhood teachers who know these students well and know and predict they're going to struggle, but haven't been able to do a lot. And our RTI system has done great things for these students, but there still are that probably in every elementary, two or three every year in kindergarten that really, really struggle. So we're, we're looking forward to having some additional tools to help those students.
Because I know some of those school psychs and even some of the case conference managers would be, try to be so creative to get help for those kids because they knew they needed them, but, yeah, well, this is great, so. And, I mean, the team that was, at least at our meeting, and then you were lobbying throughout the state, it sounds like your organization...
Yes.
That's great, super. Well, tell them a big thank you from northwest Indiana.
Yes.
Well, definitely. All right, any questions for...
That's great, that's great, thank you.
Yeah.
Good to hear.
It's gonna be good. All right, moving on to Director of Facilities, Mr. Ledger.
Thank you, Dr. Malcom. Tonight, I wanted to review, we took bids on July twenty-seventh for the new make-place building over the transportation center. We had good coverage, we had six bidders, five have done a lot of work for Lake Central in the last five years, three were on the referendum projects. This time around, we had, we had an option of a pre-engineered metal building, which was the original design, as well as another option for a pre-engineered wood building. We were hoping that that would be significantly lower. Unfortunately, it was only about, an average of about fifty-two thousand dollars lower. Worked extremely plentiful this summer, so I think that was part of it. So unfortunately, we were over budget. The bids were very, very close. I mean, the pre-engineered wood building was only a difference of forty-one thousand dollars basically between the high and the low bidder. On the metal building, we had the first, the five bidders who were a little high were only a difference of about seven thousand dollars. We did have one, a new player to the game, Burring Commercial Services, was low, so even with him, it was about a hundred and twenty-eight thousand. But unfortunately, they're over our budget, so tonight I would formally request that we reject the bids. We're gonna go back and look at some things, how we can value engineer some things. We've had some feedback from some of the contractors who bid to us, so we'll take a look at this in the spring and see if we can get this, and we'll post our budget. But tonight, I asked that to formally reject the bid. But I would like to thank everyone who did come on, it was good coverage.
Move to approve. Second. Move to approve. Move to approve a formal rejection of the bid, huh?
Well, that, that's, we have to do that by, by code.
And, and so there will be a follow-through? You, you've got another plan in mind?
We'll do some value engineering and relook at this, see how we get the number closer to our budget, yes. Yeah, it's just, it's just this bid process we're rejecting, we're still hoping to do the building in the future.
Okay.
Yes. That's good clarification.
Okay, no, that's, that's okay. All right, so we...
Call for a vote.
So we have a motion?
And a second.
And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, and motion carries.
I thank you. For my next item, I'd like to do a little summer view recap of some projects. Mr. James, who's gonna help me out with the projectors, I'm gonna move up here. You should be able to see on both screens once Rob gets us going here. Okay.
He's not gonna log in.
No, he's using his iPhone.
No, you just have to hit one.
Oh, okay.
You get it on the back screen there. There you go. Thank you, Rob. All right, I'll, I'll run through some slides. We, they're on both screens for everybody in the room. We had extremely busy summer here with some CTF projects, so Dr. Rock asked if I could give a recap and with some pictures. So right now, this is what you're looking at, we put a new sound system in the Vivage gym. That, that was done, so that's pretty much the control board. You can see the speakers above there. We also put in new stage curtains. Mrs. Logan was thrilled with the stage curtains and the sound system. There's another picture of the stage curtains. We did add, we put new bleachers in the gyms at Watson and Vivage last year, and along the gym floor, and we found out throughout the school year, the ladies, the custodial staff was having a real hard problem sliding the bleachers out manually because of the nice soft floor and the large bleachers. So we added electric to these bleachers this year. You can't really see it, but now they're all electric, so it makes things much easier on the staff. Mrs. Holman, we put in new gym floor at Holman this year. This is some of the beginning work on that. Mrs. Tucker's bleachers were in pretty good shape, she wanted to keep them, so with this process here, we, we removed them all and put them back in. And on the large, on those large bleachers there, we also added electric to those bleachers for the staff too, because of the soft floor. Just another picture, the finished product. This is Coling. Also, throughout, with working with Mr. Marino, we added, and Teresa and Sarah, we added our smart TVs in all the art and music rooms in the elementary and middle school levels, so we did all the infrastructure for all those smart TVs. And Coling, we continued the extraction of carpet. This is a classroom, we did fourteen classrooms, a workroom, and a carpet room. We replaced carpet with tile with the exceptional music room, which is what you're looking at here. We put carpet squares in instead of the old ragged carpet. Another picture of a finished classroom. Again, we did fourteen classrooms. Pfeiffer, we did a gym floor there. This is the initial process for the gym floor there. New bleachers at Pfeiffer. Also, they have electric as well. Finished product there. Some more shots of the finished product. Pfeiffer also, we continued the carpet extraction. We did the library, and if you're familiar with Pfeiffer, all that large hallway surrounding entryways, the library, all that was done. This is that large hallway here. We moved the carpet from the walls and the floors.
Wow, that's nice.
I can't thank Lena Aaron and her staff, she worked so well with us. It was a project, she also kind of used it to kind of go through her books as well. It was kind of a joint effort here. And I mean, it was, it was a lot of work for them. There's, I mean, it's, it looks, if you haven't been down there, you're really glad it's gonna get down. It looks, Mr. Lawler's just thrilled with how this turned out.
This is in the basement at Pfeiffer, right?
Yes, yes, yes. Looks totally, it looks like a new place.
Wow.
Yeah.
Nice.
There's, there's like...
Lower level.
Yeah, lower level. There's the library. I mean, this, it looks new. I mean, it's just really, it really turned out nice. Prossman, obviously not much to do, brand-new school, but at entrance W by the cafeteria in the gym, we could not keep grass there because people were cutting right through. So basically, we just added a walkway and a step. This was the, there's the finished product, that's what we did at Prossman, but at least Mr. Brown got something this year. This is Pfeiffer here, I'm sorry. This, this is not, no, this is actually Watson. That Watson, Watson got a, Watson, Watson got a new sound system, stage curtains as well. Mrs. Logan and Mrs. Lavin, I gave them, I told them they could have whatever color they wanted, they picked out their colors separately, picked out the exact same color for the curtain without even talking to one another. There's their sound system. They, Mrs. Logan and Mrs. Lavin trained on their sound system two weeks ago. It is so simple, they just love it. I'm sure a lot of you will be out there for their Veterans Day programs, and you'll notice a huge difference. It's, it's fantastic. Clark, not much to show you here, with the exception of we sealed, the power washed and sealed the entire building. We did this eight years ago. Basically, there's so much CMU, and the existing CMU, when it was new, was not treated, so it just soaks up water like a sponge. So we seal it, it's, it lasts between seven and ten years, and we got eight out of it, and it looks like a new building that hasn't been by there. It's all power washed, everything sealed. Turned out really nice. Brimmer, if you haven't been over there, this is the cafeteria area where they do a lot of their events, and they have lunch every day. Doesn't look like much, but Mr. Alicia just loves it. What you're seeing here, we, you're seeing sixty, what we call T-twelve lights, I'm sorry, T-eight lights. There used to be a hundred and five T-twelve lights in there. We, we basically went down to sixty, gave us a huge energy savings, and it is ten times brighter there than it ever was with sixty lights versus a hundred and five lights. And we also power washed and repainted all those acoustical panels. It really brightened up the whole cafeteria. It's a nice, it, it looks nice in there right now. We also did some remodeling in the kitchen. This is the kitchen office, put new counters and shelving in. We did this, this is a new training room for classes, staff, there's, it's a whole computer counter, we built this office so they could do webinars and other things. That's, that's, it's already filled up right there. Also built some walls around her dish machine, she's gonna get a new triple basin sink, I think it comes two weeks. Brimmer, also we had, we had a bad drain out on the front sidewalk that was eroding some of the main entry sidewalk, it was cracking, so we replaced a bunch of the front entryway sidewalk. Let's see, finished product there. Taylor, we, we had, we did, as you guys approved the bid, we did the entire east parking lot. This is the milling portion, we paved everything on the east parking lot there. Turned out really nice, had a lot of, a lot of people compliment about that. We also, we did a little library area for, for the librarian in Atlanta again. This thing was really in bad shape, so we, we put a new ceiling in, removed all the wallpaper, painted, we did, they had an old security system at the main entry there, we took that out, the tile entryway in. On what you're, we also refinished the entire gym floor. It's been sanded, it was just what we did at Brimmer last year, it's been sanded, it's got like six coats, it turns out great. The AD and gym teacher, also, we added bad mitten quartz for him there, it, you can see it really turned out nice. And we kind of wanted to replace the gym floor, but there was a greater need, which you aren't going to see any pictures of, there's really nothing to show you as far as... It, you can see it really turned out nice. We kind of wanted to replace the gym floor, but there was a greater need, which you aren't going to see any pictures of, there's really nothing to show you as far as the temperature patrol systems. But we are doing that whole upgrade there, but basically it's just a bunch of communication wires, wouldn't really be a throwing picture to show. But that is going right on schedule, probably about seventy percent done. We, we ran all the cable this summer. We got in all the classrooms this summer, so all the actuators and stuffs were out, out of all the classrooms before school started. We're kind of back to house now, and we should wrap that up. We were supposed to be done by Thanksgiving, but I think we'll probably be done first part of November. We also added eighteen of computer lab station, eighteen stations in the Project Lead the Way room. So we did all the infrastructure for that. Painted, a sandblast, a power wash and sandblasted the main entry and repainted the main entry.
Was that the Project Lead the Way room at the high school or?
That was Taylor.
Okay.
That was Taylor, that's coming up though. We put a new backstop into the JV baseball field here at the high school. Ah, you all know we got the sign. I think these, these kind of speak for themselves, so.
Where's them?
We did that. We, we, we did that southeast corner of the town square stairwell and landing area. This is Project Lead the Way here, Sandy. This, we added thirty-five stations to the high school Project Lead the Way.
That's new, a new addition?
It's, it's in there, it's in his existing room, but they went to, they're, they're, the software they use is so large and always being upgraded, the laptop just couldn't handle it. So they needed to go to desktops. So again, we put in this desktop station for him. He's using the room he used for laptops to do projects and other things, kind of flip-flop to have these, have these, you know, desktop stations. We finished the salt barn. Over at Transportation, this would be a huge asset for the corporation, we could store salt now. It's, it's a great addition to the corporation. Wow, that got in there. There's the finished product. We also, if you haven't been by, we painted the existing bus barn, it, it matches now the salt barn.
Awesome.
And this is probably the bus driver's favorite pictures. We put up the, put up the awning and the gas pumps. And that concludes the wrap-up.
Very nice, thank you.
Oh, you're very welcome.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Ledger? Howard?
Bill?
Yes, sir.
General observation, please don't take this as a negative.
No.
Vivis and Watson have pairs of big vertical speakers up there.
Yes.
Any concerns, I don't know if the days of dodgeball are gone or wayward basketballs of them being hit and potentially damaged?
Good idea.
They're much higher than you think. I haven't heard anything, but I'll, I'll keep an eye, I'll ask Mrs. Logan and Mrs. Lavin, the teachers, I've not, not heard of it.
Okay.
Again, you know, I've been in school a week, so.
Yeah, I understand, I understand. I, I would think if, worst case scenario, they do make cages.
That's correct. And they had speakers, where you saw those speakers, they had speakers there before. They were just old and antiquated.
Very good.
It's very nice, especially those sound systems in those buildings.
Yeah, and our goal next year, I mean, obviously, Protsman is state of the art. But our goal next year then is to follow through, kind of a process, as we did Holman and Pfeifer gym, bleachers and floor. We'll do stage curtains, sound systems as, as well as bleachers and a sound system in Choling hopefully next year as well.
You know, I was at an event at Choling and it was really hot and the air was not working. I think you said that had been taken care of.
Yes, that was, yes.
I just didn't know if that was something that we needed to look at a whole system or if it was just a unique?
It was, it was, I think it was actually that went down.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Ledger? All right, thank you. Sounds like you've been very busy this summer.
It's been a very busy summer for everybody.
So we appreciate that. All right, and Mr. Marino is not here, so moving on to Director of Business Services, Mr. James.
The only thing I have is I included in your board packet the twenty eighteen budget timeline. Next board meeting, our regularly scheduled board meeting on September fifth, I will be giving the board my budget presentation. And we will follow the calendar as I provided in your board packet. So any questions, if you have any questions, just let me know. Otherwise, this is budget season.
Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Mr. James. All right, and do we have any public comments?
No.
No. Do we have any board comments in consideration of future agenda items? Mr. Marshall?
I have none, thank you.
All right, Mrs. Seuss?
I have none.
Mr. Vaxel?
I have none also.
Mrs. Lozantine?
None at this time.
I wanted to let you know that at the public forum that you had, that we, Sandy, Cindy and I were standing there, and we had a gentleman that came up and was very appreciative of the video streaming of those school board meetings. He said, "Thank you for your transparency." So I wanted you to know that there is, it is making a difference and people are actually watching us, so it's pretty cool, huh?
And he said it had good sound.
Yes, video man. He has good sound.
So starting our symbols out to our kids and our family, right? Talking the right ear.
Very good, so we wanted you to hear those positives. And Dr. Brocko, are there any future activities that we need to be aware of?
Well, I think there's a lot of open houses coming up.
Yes, and thank you for that schedule.
I think you've received that schedule, and we'll all try to attend a couple ourselves from Central Office, and we'll be back here in two, no, two weeks and one day.
Yes, Tuesday. Next meeting is-
Tuesday after Liberty.
September fifth. Yes, and we will do our work session at six?
Correct.
Okay. All right, anything else for the good of the cause? All right, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Come on, somebody. Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, and motion carries.